Didn't do was introduce the staff members. If you don't know them, you're gonna see what they look like now. Make sure the next time you're in the facility, introduce yourself. Laura Ingraham, our executive director, is up in the front row. Our culinary team, Chef Brendan and Chef Brad. We'll be talking about Reed Vogt. I know I saw you trying to hide your statute of limitations isn't expired, so we won't turn you in. Brittany Holbert, program director, she's all the way back as well. Greg Williams, our executive administrator, longest tenured, if you didn't know this, fun fact, longest tenured Feed N C staff member. He was the first person on the payroll, 14 years. Ani Batalia, she's our director of donor development. She's the one that's hitting the phones, having coffee, going places late at night saying, "Help Feed N C," whether it's with a donation or financially as well. So if you have any questions about those roles and what people do, make sure you go say hi to them at some points, okay? So we're expecting a lot of volunteer roles to remain the same. That was one of the biggest questions everybody had was, what are the volunteer roles gonna look like? Inside the grocery area, we expect donated food, bread and bakery orders to remain the same. The folks that go and do the food pickups for us, we expect that to remain the same. Ceiling meals, that's really not gonna change. Maybe where we do it's gonna be different in the new building. Grocery guide, we envision that being pretty close to the same. Grocery cart patrol and food movers, those. I see like Rosie Weiss, I saw you somewhere, she's a food mover. And John, you're here too, is that they help shop for the whole mound and take our product home and do a wellness check on them, okay? But we're excited, we're gonna be implementing some new roles that we envision the new building with the new mission, not the new mission, but the new way we're delivering the mission to our membership is, we're actually gonna have a warehouse that if it's raining, a van can actually pull into the warehouse and we can load it, okay? Dining room champions, they're gonna be helping us talk to folks about what we're doing, giving small tours of the facility, showing them how they can donate to us and how to use our order menu system. Garden volunteers, Reed Vogt is gonna be leading that as part of his, a morphing of his role at Feed N C. We're gonna have a children's area in the grocery store. Every grocery guide in here can appreciate that poor mom that's bringing her three kids with them into the grocery area. But where else are they gonna go? You know, she's gotta bring those three kids with them. So we're in an area that will watch the kids for them, a grocery checkout, and that's still we're working on that. Let's move on. So again, most things are gonna remain unchanged. What'll be different, things like where the food sorting's done. We actually have a warehouse space that, I want it 7,000 square feet, 8,000 square feet? So that's like our building plus another half. That's how big our warehouse is gonna be. So we're gonna be doing food sorting away from the grocery members, because our goal is to have that grocery look and operate as close to the grocery store that you and I experience, okay? Children's area, again, that's gonna be a great, great new volunteer opportunity in the checkout process. We're still working on that. You know, we have a lot of food. We're in the middle of figuring out a inventory control system. We're starting just in the freezer down the road, it's gonna morph into the canned goods and just, we wanna track what's coming in, what we're getting into people's hands, because that's really important when we're telling the community what we're doing and why we're asking for additional help and funding, okay? Kitchen volunteering, after this slide, I'm gonna ask Chef Brendan to come up. I'll give you a microphone, Chef, if you need one. I know I have such a soft inside voice, but that's gonna change is, we're gonna have a menu. We're gonna have a menu, a set menu of X amount of items that anybody coming in to Donahue's Open Door is gonna be able to order and it'll be made to order there, okay? Breakfast and lunch team, you're gonna be helping with the prep work, cooking some of the standard menu items and keeping up with the sanitation of that kitchen. Breakfast and lunch kitchen teams are gonna ask you to help also when there's lulls to help keep the dining area clean as well. And Feed N C champions, they're gonna be our ambassadors. They're the ones that are going to be the eye-to-eye contact with maybe a first-time person coming for lunch that maybe needs our services, that maybe owns a business and is looking for help. It's gonna be a real important role for us, okay? And the only part is, you know, the truth of the matter is, we do need monies. We do need funds in order for us to operate. And people are gonna wanna donate to us, and people are gonna wanna know how to do that. And so that's gonna be very important for us to be able to make that as smooth and seamless as possible. Yeah, Gary, you got stuff in the front row.
Yes, sir, you show up late.
Oh, look how they just handed you right off. Just handed you right off. So I'm gonna ask Chef Brendan to come on in. Do you need a microphone?
I don't think so.
Okay. You're out and about, and I'll move the slides as you need to.
So as Paul said, we are changing the concept up. We will be doing meals to order. So this'll kinda be the breakdown of when we will need kitchen teams and how they'll be needed. We do need volunteers. So I know a lot of volunteers were saying, "Oh, there's no need for us anymore." There's very much a need for you, and there's probably a need for more, because there's gonna be extended hours. Our new hours will be from 7:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. that we will be open for meals. So with that said, we're gonna operate on the concept of all meals available at all times. So if they wanna come in and get a burger at 7:00 a.m., they can get a burger at 7:00 a.m. Vice versa, they can come in at 2:00 and get an omelet. So we will be opening at 7:00 a.m. So our first breakfast cook teams, the current hours are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Change those up a little bit. Our early team, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. They will assist Brad or myself with the setup of the kitchen, getting all of the food hot that we need hot, prepared, setting up mise en place, which basically that means getting all of our stuff in a row so we can cook to order. It's gonna be a pretty simple menu. So it's gonna be things that, you know, you probably have cooked at home, hamburgers, some scrambled eggs, a breakfast burrito. But we'll train the volunteers as we go with those things. Then we're gonna have a middle team. They're gonna be the, like a midship. They'll come in at 9:00, you know, after that first shift and do the 1:00 p.m. So it's kind of the same hours as the current teams are coming in for kitchen now. They'll be doing, helping cook meals to order, but they'll also be helping with additional prep for next day and during operation. Our late middle hours will be 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Those will be people that will be helping break down the kitchen, wrap everything, clean everything and all that. We will clean as we go, of course, but those will be the breakdown people responsible for the end of shift, closing of what we will call the hotline, which is where all the food is prepared. They'll be responsible for that. Then our late hours, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., those will be our teams that will come in and cut vegetables and crack eggs and get those types of things ready for the next day. Lay out bacon on sheet trays so we can bake that in the morning and all of those things. So those will be the 2:00 to 4:00 team. Right now, I have two teams that come in once a month, or I'm sorry, it's one team now, it used to be two. It's one team that comes in once a month, they come in the second Monday of the month and do like some heavy prep. They'll be also doing that, you know, cutting lettuce for salads, cutting tomatoes, cutting cucumbers, shredding carrots, things like that. Patty-ing up burgers if we're gonna be needing burgers, all of that. All of our kitchen team volunteers will be needed to help us pass the Aridale County and the state of North Carolina Health Department sanitation. Our current kitchen is not inspected. We're good. There's things we need to change. Those will be things that will be gone over when we get into the new building as well. Certain things that we can and can't do, certain ways that we have to store food, you know, properly for foodborne illness reasons and safety reasons. Certain chemicals that we can use, certain chemicals we can't use. So we'll go over all that. We have to have gloves for when we're handling food that's not to be heated. We need to wear hats or hairnets. We need to not use bleach in the kitchen, because bleach is not a food-safe chemical. We need to use proper, you know, ratios of disinfectants to properly sanitize things. So those will be things that we'll go over, hand washing. I mean, I know you guys don't know how to wash your hands, but all of those things, the proper food storage, you know, chicken can't go on top of the lettuce, and the cooked food has to be separate from the raw food. But those are all things, because we will be getting health inspected, because part of the operation will be as well as doing Donahue's, which will be donation-based. We will be doing some caterings and events out of that space. And in order to do those events, we need to have a county health inspection, and in order to have us pass the county health inspection, we need to follow all those rules. So those will be posted, we'll go over those. There will be training sessions, if you will, throughout the new getting ready to move into the building. And then as teams come into the new building, we will be training them. And you know, Brad and I also have to take these trainings. Brad and I take, we both are serve-safe certified. We have to go every five years to recertify with sanitations certifications. So you guys don't have to go that far unless you'd like to, because then we can figure out a way where we can get team captains serve-safe certified. But that is gonna be very important.
Thank you, Brendan. I just wanted to add, I know for kitchen teams, current kitchen teams are like, "Man, we're used to going from 9:00 to 1:00." You know, what's involved this? You wanna know what? We have to evolve and morph to our service model now. That might be something where your team says, like Suzie, your crew might say, "We're just doing the early middle hours. We'll just take care of that." Or some of your folks might say, "Yeah, I can do early middle hours and late middle hours." We'll have that all broken up in Cyogenius, which remember, we're gonna be talking about that in a little bit, is all these new opportunities are gonna be made available in Cyogenius, okay? And all of a sudden, we move in there, it's like, well, that's not working out that well. We're gonna overcome a gap and improvise as quickly as possible to pivot and get it where it needs to go quick, because it's gonna be new for all of us, too. Thank you, Chef.
We're gonna try and run it as much as a professional kitchen as possible with volunteers. We will eventually be able to hire on some more staff. At this time, Brad and myself are there. Brad will be primarily in charge of the Donahue's Open Door Kitchen. I will be overseeing that, but I will also be flexing more towards the Culinary Workforce Development Program. We will also have students at certain times that will be able to fill in these gaps, and that will be good training for them as well. So we have.
About Donahue's Open Door.
I have not met you, I'm very sorry, and I would love to meet you, so come up and say hi when we finish. All I really want to talk about today, there's a lot of words on that slide, I wanna talk about the why, the reason that we did this project to begin with. So about five years ago, we went out and we knocked on doors, some of you were a part of that. We knocked on doors in our community and we said to the people that we serve, "How can we serve you better? What can we do differently?" What they told us, at that time, we mostly did a hot meal, and we gave them a few groceries on the way out the door. What all these families said to us was, "We need groceries. Hot meals aren't particularly helpful, because my kids are in school during that time, so I'm the only one who can come. I need groceries so that I can feed my family on the nights and the weekends." They also said, "I need a better job. The wages that I'm earning are not enough." And they also said, "I need to know people who know people and can help me with things." So we heard those three things loud and clear. That's why we changed the name from Mooresville Soup Kitchen to Feed N C. The acronym kind of includes all of those things wrapped up. And so that's where we started five years ago down this journey. We changed the name, we started focusing on grocery. As you can tell, unfortunately, our whole building has been overtaken by grocery now because of the demand. And so then we raised some money with your help, and it was a lot more money than we've ever raised, and we are thankful to all of you for that. And then we put a shovel in the dirt, and so in February, we are gonna move in to this amazing space that you all helped us to build. And the reason that we really wanted to start talking with you all now about this is that this is the culmination of years and years of work that got to this point. And what matters the day we move in is that we do all the things we told people we were gonna do when we get in there. The why for the new building is that we needed a dining room. They told us that they needed to know people and to meet people. So we're gonna bring everybody in this community into our dining room. We're gonna bring the mayor in, we're gonna bring business owners in, we're gonna bring in people who make change in this community, and they're gonna be able to talk to those people so that they can influence decisions in our community, just like you and me. That's the purpose of Donahue's Open Door. So we used to be a soup kitchen. We don't want to be a soup kitchen. That's one of the reasons that the name changed. We want everybody that we serve to feel as welcome as you and I. They need to have as much dignity as you and I, and that's not how a soup kitchen feels in 2022. So we're gonna have a restaurant, we're gonna have a beautiful grocery where they can shop for their groceries, we're gonna have the amazing workforce development program that we already have on a bigger scale. And then we're also gonna offer events and rental spaces so that Feed N C can support itself for many, many years to come. So as Brendan went over, community dining for breakfast and lunch, so think of Sunup or Toast in our community. It's the same hours, same kinds of food. Community dining will happen from 7:00 to 2:00. That means if you're hungry at 7:30, you can eat at 7:30, which is one of my most exciting things. You do not have to eat from 12:00 to 1:00. It is very hard to eat from 12:00. It is hard for me to eat from 12:00 to 1:00. I miss lunch about half the time. So people in our community who work from 12:00 to 1:00, that is very hard for them. So again, this is about dignity. If I can eat at 7:00 a.m. before I go to work, I want them to be able to eat at 7:00 a.m. before they go to work. It is a free restaurant for the entire community, and free means free. So there will be no equivalencies. It's not gonna say, "Give us $5 for your hamburger." None of that, it is free. At the end of your meal, if people would like to give, there will obviously be an opportunity to give. We don't miss that opportunity. But there are no dollar signs attached to anything that anybody eats. And as you all know, the food that Chef Brendan and Chef Brad prepare is always amazing, and most people don't understand how it's free to begin with. So it will continue to be beautiful, tasty, healthy food. It's gonna be cooked to order, fast casual. So if you imagine, there are a couple of pictures of the dining room down there if you haven't seen them. So think of Alino's. You go up and you order at the kiosk, and then you're gonna go sit down, and then your food is either gonna be called, your name will be called, or we may have runners who can run the food out. So that's kind of the fast casual. There is no table service or anything like that. Cook team, chef and students will operate the kitchen. We're gonna go back to the how-to in just a minute. There will be a 250-seat dining room. So again, this is an event space. I'm super excited about whoever is the first person to get married at Feed N C. I don't know who that's gonna be, but it's gonna be somebody. So we, so think about that, if anybody has children or grandchildren getting married. I think people will want to do that. We have some really amazing young people in our community that I think care as much about giving back as they do about where they host an event. So we can have big events, we can have birthday parties, we can have business events, and we will by no means be the most expensive event spot in town, but we do need to charge. We have costs involved in it, too. So there will be a reasonable charge, and then the exciting thing about how it affects workforce development is that every event that happens gives the students the opportunity to learn. So now they know how to work an event, they know how to cater an event. This is something that they might get hired to do in the future. Dining room and several small spaces will be available, so there's two classrooms, there's also a conference room in the building. So we will rent all of those spaces at reasonable prices. The entire facility will be a training ground for the students. When we think about what we're gonna do every day, and we do this, we try very hard to do this now. We only do things that are about the mission. We only do things that help the people. So we will not host an event if it isn't helpful to the students that we're training. That's the reason that all of these things exist, is for the people that we serve. So if we find that an event is just a little too complicated, they need, you know, purple and green polka dotted tablecloths, and we don't have those, we won't do that event. This is about the mission. We're never gonna lose sight of why we do what we do. The events are a way that we can train people and a way that we can bring in some earned income so that we can pay our bills. Again, it provides income for the operating budget. As you can imagine, a building of this size is more expensive to operate. So we have been working hard on that to make sure that we can do that and we're being responsible with people's donations. And there's also daily opportunities for new visitors to understand the mission. So the hope is that our entire community is gonna come into this space, and then they're gonna fall in love with what we do and what you all do every day. Open door. This is my thank you, which I try never to miss the opportunity to say thank you. Feed N C only exists because of you all. It has always existed because of you all. Many of you even predate Greg, if that's possible. So I know you have been around far longer than all of us, and you created this mission. And so we want you to be a part of the future. We're not gonna lose the history. There's gonna be a really cool hallway in this new building that starts from the beginning at the Baptist church and kind of works its way through the history of the organization. And we will always honor the history, but we're excited about the future and what it means for the people in our community. Just a few other things about Donahue's. So what's important about Donahue's that you all will want to be involved in is how we tell the story of bringing people into our building. Right now, if you need help, you come into our building. If you're a volunteer, you come into our building. And maybe if you're a donor, you come into our building. But there's a whole lot of people in our community who have no reason ever to come into our building. So one of the exciting things about Donahue's Open Door is that everybody can eat an omelet, right? So everybody can come through the front door and see how much we and you love this mission and the people in our community. So when we get ready to sound the horns at the beginning of the year, we're gonna start telling the whole world that they're invited to come. And we could really use your help with that. There are thousands of volunteers, and we could use your help with telling your neighbors, your church, your friends, "Meet me at Feed N C for lunch on Tuesday," just like you might meet somebody at another restaurant for a meeting. That's how we're gonna get 'em in the door and get 'em excited about being a part of it. The things that are gonna make Donahue's successful, number one, the food's gonna be amazing. We're hoping that we have repeat customers. Every restaurant needs repeat customers. That's how they continue to thrive. We want every kind of person to want to go there. So I will tell you that what worries me at 2:00 a.m. is that anybody wouldn't feel welcome in this building. So first concern is that the people that we serve feel welcome, and that's not negotiable to me. So it's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be dignified, but we need to make sure that they know that it's for them. And we're gonna roll out the red carpet for the people that we serve. The other piece is that we need everybody in our community to feel welcome and to know that it's for them. So there's also a possibility that if I'm not paying for my food, I don't wanna go there because I feel like I should be paying for my food, right? So we have to tell our neighbors and our friends, "Nope, you are welcome here. You wanna make a donation, you can, but you're not taking advantage of free food. You're contributing to the mission by coming." Because they have something to offer, they have contacts in the community, they own a business, they could hire somebody. So we need them to come in the door, not to get free food, but to be a part of the mission. We obviously need some people who dine with us to make donations. That's how we'll cover our cost. Our cost is about $2 a person for a meal, so we're hoping that if, you know, some of the people who come in give a gift, then that will cover our cost. We need people to be nice to each other all day, every day. There's a lot of places in this world that that doesn't happen right this minute. So I don't know about you, but I, that happens every day at Feed N C already. So I actually have no fear that people are gonna be nice to each other, but that's an important part. And that it's safe and clean. We want it to be a beautiful restaurant where everybody feels welcome. Last but not least, we talked a little bit about the ambassadors in the dining room. So some of you who have been in the kitchen or other spots, this dining room ambassador is gonna be a really, really important role, who kind of needs to understand Donahue's, needs to understand Feed N C. You're gonna see a person eating by themselves and go up and talk with them and try to connect them to other people. A lot of you have said to me over the years, "I'm stuck in the kitchen and I wanna be out there." Ms. Suzie desperately wants to be out there, she always has wanted to be. So this is your chance. You're gonna be able to sit amongst all the people that we serve, you're gonna be able to make those connections, introduce people. Maybe you know this person, but you don't know this person, you can make an introduction, you can show people around. So that's a big change and a new role that we would love for you to be a part of for us. So thank you again, thank you for being here, thank you for all of your time, and we are just so excited to celebrate. This is the end of a really long journey. We're excited to celebrate and we're excited to have you all be a part of it.
Thank you, Laura. You know, when Laura was talking about the dining room ambassadors, I was not privileged yet to be blessed to be a part of Feed N C. For some of you OGs, I think the kids call it, old guard, I'll say, we're kind of going back to that route where we were, it was about the in-house dining. You know, people were coming in here to eat, and they hung out all day, you know, and then maybe got breakfast, and then they took off. So we're kind of going back to that. I think that's pretty cool. A lot of places try to eliminate that connection with people. They just process go, process go, and so we're going back to that. I think that's pretty cool. Oh, that ain't right. What am I doing here? Next slide. All right. Hold on. Slide it, I'm making it too big now. Hey, that's better. All right. One of my favorite subjects. One of my favorite subjects. We're probably at about a, boy, if I had a gun to my head, about 60, 65% volunteer force usage of Sign Up Genius. It's gonna become critical at the new building. When we, when we, when we're short two or three people on first shift or second shift, we can muddle through it. We can make it. If we're short 10 people at the new facility, it's gonna be a long day at the office, as they say. If you are technologically resistant, I will help you. If you don't know how to use it, I will help you. But over time, I see a lot of people that are regular users of all ages. It's simple, it has a mobile app. We gotta know who's coming in. I wanna be able to sleep at night knowing that we have enough folks coming, because if we don't, then it's like sending eight football players out to play against the other 11. We're gonna lose. We're gonna barely make it that day, and we don't wanna lose a day to anything, especially if it's in our control, if you all use Cyogenius. All right. It's just, it's sort of how many volunteers are we gonna need in the new building? I'm throwing it towards the bull's eye, but it's gonna be close to double. It's gonna be close to our double head count right now. On any given day between food movers, between people in the middle room, breakfast team, kitchen teams, first and second shift pantry, all the different volunteers, we're usually close to 40, 45 people on any given day. So we're talking potentially 90, you know, because of those other roles we showed up, because the expansion of the kitchen teams, how we're gonna need this crew. It's gonna be critical that you use this. how we're going to need this crew. It's going to be critical that you use this. Get one of your friends to use it. One of my best examples is I don't see everybody in here on my Tuesday morning middle room. They see, you know what they all do? The rest of, what do you guys do before you guys go with your phones? They all open up sign up genius and they're all signing up because it's a moving four week calendar. I used to have it open for the whole year. Paul Mahelik would sign up for it and never show up. And then I'd have to back Paul Mahelik out of all those slots he signed up for. But this crew knows it's a rolling thirty-eight calendar. Nick does it. Nick Harshbarger for lifting and receiving. Fifth week's up, boom, boom, boom. Thirty seconds later, he signed up again. All right. It's going to be critical. I'm going to push you for it. I know sometimes that's uncomfortable, but I'm going to push you. Okay? I'll help you though. All right. Yeah, enough about sign up genius. Okay. So we have a plan. You know, you heard about our fifty thousand foot view plan on what we think staying the same and what's going to change. And we know we don't know everything. I don't know it's actually going to work till we get in there. You know, it's going to be like, ah, why didn't we think of that? Ah, okay, let's move that real quick. Ah. There's going to be a lot of ah moments. Not aha moments, but ah moments. But we're going to be okay. We get through it every day, right? We know that we plan for, may or may not need that tweaking. Once we're in the new space, you all might be the ones that see the forest through the trees. That one little change that you saw, that you told us and suggested it becomes that aha moment versus the arg moment, okay? So we're going to expect that feedback from you, okay? And we're going to welcome that because we want to get it hitting on all eight cylinders as quickly as possible because there's nothing more frustrating when suggestions of things that could change and improve processes and the way we deliver our mission that fall on deaf ears. I know that would tick off my direct reports if I didn't at least take into consideration what they had to say to. And we want to do that out of respect for you guys because you guys have been places and done things that we didn't. So we want that input from you. So all we ask for you to do is come on in. Don't stop coming in. We need you to come on in and get us up to running. Let's have a great attitude, but maintain flexibility. You know, you guys hear me say I'm the chief caper or I'm going to put you where I need to. Some of y'all are very senior volunteers in just your tenure there. I don't even have to tell you to move. You see that breads and bakery need some help sorting or the front line needs help get deli put up. That's where I need the veterans, you guys to come on in. And remember the old saying, you know, people plan, God laughs. You know, we have a good idea, but he might shift us and we're going to move with that shift because it's all about the mission. At the end of the day, it's not about us on staff. It is about you as volunteers, but it's actually all about the people we're serving, you know? That makes a lot of sense to me. So I want to do this in an organized fashion is open up, I'm going to talk about a couple of questions that were asked at the first meeting. And if anybody thinks they need a mic, I'm going to make Reid get up and run over with you with the microphone. You going to help or no? We'll get over you. So come on, you know. I flipped a coin and it was going to be Greg, but you lost. So you're in charge of it. All right. But if somebody needs a mic, if not, we use your inside voice. I'll use my inside out aside voice. Okay. One of the questions first came up, where are you guys getting the students for our workforce development programs? We're getting those students from really, believe it or not, our membership, our grocery membership. These are folks that see the life-changing things that are happening at Feed N C. And we advertise it, if you will, in communicating that these opportunities for workforce development are out there, for a warehouse training program and a culinary trap to work in a professional kitchen. You know, we're not teaching them everything they need to run an Amazon warehouse or to run the Escoffier Room in New York City, but it's enough to get you hired on at a living wage, you know? So we're putting it out to our memberships first. And then David, who's not here today, he'll also go to different places like NC Works to offer those type of job opportunities with us. It's a thirteen week commitment with us, okay? Are you encouraging people to linger for a period of time? You heard Laura, we want people to hang out. You know, that's where connections get made. Everybody's been to a party where you didn't know everybody and everybody, all of a sudden, you start talking to somebody. And the next thing you know, that's the only person you talk to for the entire party or the networking event or the business event. But also you're really connected a couple of layers deeper. Like now you can actually say, I talked to Brad and I know some of his backstory and what he, you know, what he's all about. So yeah, we want people to linger, okay? People, oh, this is my favorite. People who are not going to be able to get to the new facility. Look, we, that was one of the primary considerations we had was how do those folks get here that are walking up to us at the current facility? So programming, what they did was to, at that time, when we had to start making decisions, because this has been a process, but we got to that point, they did a survey. And who could not get to the new facility knowing where it was going to be three miles away? It was less than two handfuls of folks. But what we are doing is working with ICATS, there's actually a physical bus stop at the Mooresville Public Library. Hopefully that they'll send it twice a day to pick up folks in the morning and twice again in the afternoon. But really, we just didn't say, no, we're not doing anything. We're going to make sure everybody is able to get there, okay? Well, there are greeters. Yeah, we talked about that. We have the bridges out of poverty training. So while we start having more space, big operative word. If you have them coming lately, come and see why we need a new building. We're just to the rafters with blessings and donations. But yeah, we're going to have classes again. We're going to have Bible studies again. We're going back to those original roots that Feed N C, the Mooresville Soup Kitchen started out with. We know how important that is to the community we serve. So we're going to have those classes like how to answer checkbook, you know? Hey, if you don't want us to have for a workforce above program, we have other speakers, guest speakers are going to want to come in and talk about how they can help our grocery members, okay? I talked about how many volunteers we need. I'm thinking at least two. Sign up genius, how else can I see other roles? And so I'll go back to, if you're technologically resistant, see Paul. I'll show you what it looks like on a desktop computer or a laptop. You can see everything. I'll show you how to navigate it. Those of you that are technologically savvy, I'll, with you, I will download the mobile app and literally you'll say, oh, I don't need a desktop anymore. Like I said, the middle room. Nurse, I'm going for the next one. Education, what will that look like? Work in progress, like right now, it's, we have to share space. So this class has to, warehouse folks have to be there. We can pull them all together and we can do some sort of group training with the culinary students. All right, culinary students, you got to go in back and it's just, we want to get there. We're going to improve that because right now it's very chunky for us and we want to make sure we have that. And one of the things, the sample foods from grocery, you know, we're tasking the chefs to maybe on what we know, we're getting a lot of, you've seen it when we get a lot of sweet potatoes. We get a lot of, we get a lot of bananas. Boy, we get a lot of bananas. Anybody want a banana? Go get a banana. Get your box at the shop, you know, but what can you do with that? Okay? Here's five ingredients, the base ingredients for a recipe. Here's a recipe that week with, you know, poilo con queso or something.